Look at this thing, I can eat this thing, it's so close.
Eric.
She was.
Eric has a lot more to say than me because.
Are you ready? Are you ready? We'll get started.
As soon as she gives me the signal that she's ready to go.
There we go.
Here we go, okay. Welcome to the November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen Norfolk Planning Board meeting. Please be advised that this meeting is being video and audio taped for home consumption. Why don't we deal with our first appointment this evening, seven o'clock, Rob Kane, Norway Farms. And, Rob, you're on.
Good evening, gentlemen. As you know, we have an approved subdivision, excuse me, and we've had a problem with our existing utilities and getting new utilities into the site. So the proposed subdivision road should be coming down here, double lanes. I've only marked out one side, and then down here you can see where it continues down to the cul-de-sac, where it's two lanes. And my existing utilities, this is my existing driveway here.
Yep.
In the hollow green, and there's a telephone pole, and my existing utilities come down the driveway there.
Follow the red line?
Yes, on the red line. So the problem that we have is, and that's a primary power line, high voltage. So the problem that we're having is that when we get into this area here, there's quite a grade change.
Excuse me, is the red underground or above ground?
No, it's underground.
Underground, yeah.
Yeah. But there's, in this area, it goes from maybe about four feet to eight foot cut, getting deeper and deeper until you get down to here. So the problem is, is if you start getting too close into there, you have the risk of exposing the primary wires. So what we'd like to propose is to have an entrance coming in this way. And there is the turnout area for a mailbox, and people want to wait for a school bus just to get out of the lane of traffic. So we're, we have one lane of traffic, it's double wide there for about fifty feet. And then you continue down here into the roadway where we'd proposed to build all the way down around the cul-de-sac. And then coming out where the two grades meet, we would have a cut over up onto my old driveway where you could drive out, and you'd have a good line of sight up on top and all that. That, that's a very substantial, this part's all paved, the rest of it's gravel, but we used to have tractor trailers in there all the time when we had our tree nursery, and the guys have been bringing their heavy equipment down in there so they're not offloading up in the street. So that, that's a very substantial surface. So I proposed that to Tetra Tech, who's doing the peer review for us. And he thought for safety reasons, we should refer to Chief Bushnell. And I did, and we have a letter from the chief who said that he thought that that was a satisfactory solution. And so it went back to Steve at Tetra Tech again, and he had some concerns about the change in grade and about the amount of traffic. And so with the change in grade, and I have some photos, I've placed substantial boulders, you know, three, four-foot boulders, all along that edge going up, especially around the area where the fire hydrant is. And then as far as the traffic goes, it'll be for my wife, my son, and myself, and then when we get building permits, it will be for just the contractors. But we can't sell homes until we have the completed electric service on-site anyways for new residential families. So that alleviated that concern from Steve.
So do I take it that what you're, what you're proposing is a temporary solution?
Yes, sir, yep.
Okay, and at some point, utilities get rerouted and you go back to the original plan?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, yes, absolutely, absolutely. The, the, the pole location, as it stands now, would get moved over into the area where the sidewalk is. So at some point in time, we might be able to finish the road, but you can see right in this area, there's where the curb radius is. The road might be able to be finished with the pole still exposed in the roadway a little bit. It, I, we've been working with a company since May, interfacing with Verizon and EverSource.
Rob, are they gonna take your existing utility line and move it on to the subdivision line at the end? Are you gonna continue to have your own service?
Oh, no, we're gonna have fourteen new services, John.
So yours is gonna be pulled out?
Yes.
At the end?
Yes, this, this service here is not gonna be usable. Where we did grading on the property, it's too deep and.
But the question I have to Rick is, why isn't this road being just brought to subgrade before you start to do any utility connections?
They are bringing the road.
Mike.
He's talking about the, you talk about the four-foot grade change, aren't you first bringing that road to subgrade?
Well, it, it is now, it's, it's just in this one area where there's a grade differential.
Betsy, could you go to the pictures by chance? That might help.
So Rick, right now, he's, he's scrubbed off the organic soil and he's bringing that to subgrade, is that what's going on right now?
Correct.
All right, so once it's a subgrade, before he starts putting in utilities, there's gonna be no grade change, it's gonna be leveled.
Yeah, so, so right here is where the road's gonna go. That's the, the half furthest away from Main Street. To take this and dig it over here and bring this elevation of the existing driveway down to this grade, which is probably eighteen inches to two feet lower, because it's at subgrade now, they're gonna bring the gravel envelope in and the, and the processed gravel envelope in and then the asphalt. So this side to cut it over would expose the electric line that's running through here now that powers Mr. Kane's house. So the plan is whenever Source and Verizon can get the pole relocated, the wires reconnected, and then the wires, the main electric feed for the fourteen houses into the development, Mr. Kane's house will be connected to that as well as the other houses. So this is a temporary solution to allow, it's a little proactive on Mr. Kane's part to come here with this temporary solution because they're talking about finishing up the roadway. Water line's just about finished, then now they're getting ready to put the gravel envelopes in and, and then pave it with the binder course, and then he'd be here with the board looking for lot releases and covenants and things of that nature. And what he's basically trying to do is get the first about three hundred feet in as a one-way road in, the temporary road out, with the understanding that until the pole is removed and relocated and the current electric service is taken out and the new electric service for the whole development is in, he won't be able to sell any houses. Because he can't sell a house to someone who doesn't have electricity. The only house that has electricity is his. So it allows him to continue to live in his house, the subdivision to progress, and then in the future, when the electric company and Horizon can get the pole moved.
The existing driveway is off of the new right-of-way.
It's outside of it, yes. And I, you can see the boulders that have been placed here and the grade change, kind of gives you a little idea of what's happening.
You are going to build before, you're just not going to sell the houses, you'll start to build?
Correct, that's the plan. So that the, the Canes, the road contractors, and any building contractors would have the ways in and out, but it would only be for contractors, not for residents. And hopefully between the road being completed and the planning board's input on covenants and bonding, et cetera, and trying to get some houses built, EverSource and Verizon can.
Do you need power poles and stuff to?
No, everything's underground.
I know it's underground, so you're gonna access that?
I don't know what your plan is, for temporary power, are you gonna try and utilize temporary power?
Well, there shouldn't be any temporary power when, when we're ready to switch over my.
For construction.
Existing, oh, for the construction, that'll be off of generators, I guess, and, yeah. I, I've hired a company to interface between Verizon and EverSource for me, and we started this in the last days of May and have barely gotten anywhere. It's just extremely difficult.
That pole can take, as you know, two years to be moved.
Oh, yeah, yep, so.
They're a challenge to deal with, to say the least.
The, the real concern that we have is just to be able to get forward and get lot releases. We have to do the tri-party agreement, get lot releases, so then I can get a building permit. If, if this whole thing gets put off till next spring, we won't be looking at building permits till the middle of the summer. So hopefully the weather, I know we're gonna have some cold weather, hopefully we'll get a warm week here in December and be able to get some pavement down, so. But that's also pending on Mother Nature, so.
Any questions or any other members of the board, Aaron? Greg, you understood, okay?
Good.
Gary, you okay?
Yep.
John?
Yep.
All right, understood. Do we need a, a motion to, for a temporary modification here to the, to the plan?
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
He's just, there'll be an access rule.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, Rob wanted to just bring it to the board's attention.
Well, we thank you for doing that, and it looks like a reasonable temporary arrangement, so good luck with it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good evening.
Have a great Thanksgiving.
Yep, you too.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you wanna vote to continue the seven to the December meeting? Site plan special permit?
Yeah, we probably oughta cover, there's a whole bunch of them here, right?
Yeah, we read, yes.
All right, I need a motion to continue the public hearing for one thirty-four Main Street until the December eighteenth meeting.
I'm just gonna continue.
Do I have a second?
What time?
Seven, well.
Yeah, seven, I think would be good.
Seven would be good.
Yeah.
Motion to continue till seven PM.
The eighteenth, is a second?
One thirty-four Main Street. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. And we need a motion to continue the public hearing for three David Road Site Plan until seven ten PM on Tuesday, December eighteenth.
So moved.
Second.
I need discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And for the triple header, we need a motion on Cranberry Heights Definitive and Space Subdivision for continuance until December eighteenth at seven twenty PM. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good.
What time is that at?
Seven twenty, same as on this agenda here.
Perfect.
We should make it like seven twenty-five.
Now, we got eight, seven or eight minutes to wait till we get this Five Shire Drive, we've covered that. Island Power and Light, we, we don't need, I don't think we need a motion, do we?
No, no.
No, okay.
We thought they'd be coming in this meeting, but they didn't get in their modification request, so.
Yep, all right, well, town planner update, you wanna pick one and hit it until seven thirty?
Sure. We do have the, I believe in your packets, the flyer for the community workshop on December sixth at seven PM, the Freeman Kennedy School Cafeteria for Complete Streets.
Yep.
You wanna mark your calendar, pass around the word, we have it up on the town website, it was up on, it's on the Facebook page, and I believe it went over to the cable, if I recall, I think you sent it there.
I put it on the town Facebook, the community Facebook.
I'll check the cable, I thought it went to cable, but if not, we'll get it up on the cable, spread the word.
Yep.
And then, of course, you know, town meeting will be coming up on the twenty-seventh, we can let people know, mark their calendar for that. And so it's just a.
I've seen the maps that are, that are up and the markings that people have used. Got any recent information? Most of it just seem to be pretty, pretty old, I guess.
Yeah.
Relatively speaking, that is.
Well, I, I did mention before, I could remind people that we'll, it'll remain up there, and the, the map will continue to be up there after the community meeting. So if we get more.
Input, yeah.
Yeah, when people come to the meeting, it might direct more traffic to the map afterwards too as well. So we expect we'll get some more feedback from there.
Will there be an announcement at the town meeting?
Yeah.
Some sort of.
Yeah, make an announcement at the town meeting to let people know about it.
Can people see the feedback that other people have provided?
Yeah, so if you go in the map, you can just hover on the little, there's different icons.
Yeah.
You can see the comments there, so whether it's a.
Some entertaining comments at the map in the library.
Some entertaining ones.
Oh, yeah?
There's some online too, actually.
Called the turkey?
It's quite a range, that have nothing to do with streets or.
Online, you can read about the turkeys if you want, but.
How much does a grant that goes with this?
It's thirty-eight thousand dollars.
And if we decide to do so many intersections, say, we, where does the difference in funding come from?
So there's another tier, another pot of money, so this, the thirty thousand, that thirty-eight thousand right now we have is the development of the prioritization plan. And then, once that plan is reviewed and accepted by the town, also Mass DOT, then it makes the town eligible for the money, and there's up to, right now, it's, let's see, it's, you know what, I don't wanna quote the number, 'cause I think, forget the dollar amount, I'll report back to you on that.
So addressed the needs in order of priority?
Yeah, so based on the priority of needs for the town, we can apply for funding. So some of it will be partial funding, but some could be complete funding, and then also could be, you know, bundled with other money that we may have as well.
And, and it's, it, it might be one or two projects a year, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, so. And there, I think that the program has gone quite well so far, and I think they're continuing to, to consider ways to kind of add more money to the funding 'cause of the projects that they've been seeing.
Okay.
Still got five minutes, if you wanna go another quick one?
Yeah, pick another one, sure.
All right.
There's some filler too, if you think everything is more than five minutes.
No, I don't, I don't think so. So I did send an email to the board about the Town Center Grant to create a steering committee.
Yep.
Which I was suggesting that there'd be a member from the Planning Board, ZBA, Advisory Board, Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, two business owners, and two property owners. And this will be, as it mentioned at the last meeting, working with MAPC on the Town Center Grant, looking at the zoning and some of the regulatory requirements that we have for development. Thought being that this would be, I know we have the, the Bylaw Review Committee, but this is more targeted towards the Town Center, and I think this group could give us a nice cross-section with some participation from some business owners and some property owners. A business owner could also be a property owner, so they could fill two roles, but ideally, it'd be nice to have at least two of each. If you see there numerically, I have arrived on nine, so it's a odd-numbered committee. The committee in and of itself doesn't have any, you know, regulatory power, they'd be advisory, they'd have to come back. So for example, you know, if something comes out of it from the Planning Board, then they'll go to the Planning Board. So, you know, there's a recommendation, move forward on it. Likewise, if it's the, not necessarily the zoning board, the zoning board is really, I think, would be helpful 'cause they see different requests for permitting before them, and also just the context relation to some of the developments that happen. The Advisory Board, I think, would be helpful for them to know what's going on, would be forthcoming, and obviously Selectmen, and the Board of Health will, will be looking at some of the Board of Health, I think, regulations as it relates to development, so it'd be good to have a member from the Board of Health. And then I think the other two is self-explanatory, so open for additions, corrections, so forth. This would be the Planning Board, I did talk to Jack a little bit about it. So it would be a committee through the Planning Board, so there's no real hard and fast rule here, so. What I thought we would do, if this looks good to the board, we would then send a letter out to the other boards. Planning Boards would have a little introduction, what the grant's about, what we're looking to try to do, and participation. They could decide amongst themselves who, who they would recommend back.
Yep.
And then, as far as the community at large, we'd have to put advertisements out there for people that we're looking for. Within an advertisement, just what their, what we're, what the project would entail.
What's the timeline you're working on?
So I think realistically, we're probably into the new year, basically, to get started, because I've gotta, you know, reach out to all those different boards, they gotta meet, discuss it, and then we gotta reach out to the community as far as the business property owners. So I would say to the board, you have a proposed schedule for two thousand and nineteen already, which has January fifteenth. I think that would be the, the meeting, the target, to have everything back to the board, to get moving forward. Which kind of matches up with MAPC too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Now seven.
Any comment from any members of the board?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Well, from here, it looks like seven thirty, so we'll be ready to talk about Five Shire Drive. Now, let's see, do we need to read into the, we do. Aaron, you're, you're gonna be on.
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass GL Section forty A and the Norfolk Zoning Bylaw Section F eleven. A public hearing will be held on Monday of November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at seven thirty PM in Room one twenty-four, the Norfolk Town Hall, One Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, regarding a site plan application for property located at Five Shire Drive, Lot twenty-two, Shire Industrial Park in Norfolk, Massachusetts. The applicant, Sam Hadad of Raycon Construction, Braintree, Massachusetts, is proposing construction of a five thousand two hundred and eighty-square-foot warehouse office building with associated parking and utilities and grading as depicted on provided plans. The applicant is also requesting a stormwater management permit, earth removal permit, and special permit to allow outdoor storage facility exceeding one thousand square feet as specified in D one E one one of the Norfolk zoning bylaws. The property is located in the C one zoning district, reference Assessor's Map eighteen, block sixty-nine, lot one through three. The plan and application are available for inspection in the office of Norfolk Planning Board during the hours of nine AM to six PM, Monday through Thursday.
Thank you. So.
Can I get a peer review set up for this, peer reviewer?
Yes, so the plans and all the related reports have been sent over to Beta Engineering, they're in the process of.
Yep.
Doing the peer review.
Yep. So you wanna take a microphone and identify yourself, please?
My name's Charlie Shepherd, I'm from CDW Consultants in Natick with a civil engineer for the applicant, Raycon Construction. And I have Zach from DJSA Architects, who's gonna speak a little bit about the building as well. So to begin with, it's Lot twenty-two, Five Shire Drive. There we go. The lot is thirty-five thousand, I believe it's five ninety-one square feet. Actually, the proposed building is seven thousand four hundred and eighty, it's five thousand two hundred and eighty warehouse and then office up here, so the total footprint is seven thousand four hundred and eighty square feet.
Can you just back up one step for a minute? Locust is right across from Island Power and Light, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. It's like, I think, I believe this, this is, Lot twenty-three is the detention pond, which wraps around, and behind here is the community septic system, all subdivision. So we proposed this industrial building, seven thousand four hundred and eighty square feet. We have office in the front, warehouse in the back. We have two overhead doors here, another overhead door here. We have twenty-five parking spaces, two handicapped in the front. Coming in here with a ramp, coming up to an entrance here, and there's another separate entrance here. Let me see, what else, we've, we proposed, because of the grade of the detention barn next door, which drops off, we proposed a wall here, we call that a ready rock wall. I think the client's gonna do a poured, casted place concrete, 'cause he's a concrete guy, so I think he's gonna do that. But he'll dress it up to look like a segmented wall. It's ready rock. Height of this, the highest part is five feet, so we've asked for a waiver greater than four feet in height. We'll put a, a wood guardrail on top.
Which would extend from where to where?
Well, it's gonna come from here, it's gonna come all the way down, and then it's gonna come around the corner here, because what we have is, we have a proposed rain garden here. The, the site's gonna sheet flow like this down to this corner, this is flush, so it can spill over and spill over here into this rain garden. So the, the timber rail would wrap all the way around to here.
Yep.
We also have another piece over here, because we're gonna grade this down into a grass swale that starts up here and comes all the way down. So we, there's a lot, there's a fair amount of ledge on this lot, probably, you know, there's some blasted ledge, there's some solid ledge, probably two feet. So we were trying to eliminate as many structures as we could. You know, instead of catching it, you know, catch basin here and here, we just said, let's just sheet flow the whole thing and then bring it into here, which we hope will make it easier. So we have a grass swale here, the downspouts are gonna come off this, will come into the grass swale here, bring that down, bring it to here, it turned, I think, to the next. So here's the grading and drainage. So again, we're gonna split it, this, from about here, comes this way, this comes this way, all, all the way down to here. Again, sheet flow, come across this flush area into the rain garden, and then this comes down to a structure, gets piped across into that same rain garden.
Yep, all right.
We can't, we are not showing any of the roof infiltration because of ledge. Just don't think we'll be able to do it, we can't get down deep enough. So instead, we're gonna capture the roof, again, around the swale and come in here and store it here in the rain garden, so there's enough capacity for that. Anything from here that's above and beyond that roof infiltration would then come up and outlet out to, I assume there's an existing stub, there's supposed to be a stub that we haven't found yet, but to a stub to the, the regular line, which then goes to the community service of the detention pond over here. So it'll hold what it needs for the roof, and the rest will outlet. And we did show an emergency spillway here for a greater storm, if it can't hold. we did show an emergency spillway here for a greater storm. If it can't hold it, it would come out here and then spill out into the detention pond. So that's layout, that's grading and drainage.
When, when you're finished and the grading is finished and the project is finished, what is the elevation difference? You said it was about four or five feet on the left?
Yeah, the most is, is five feet.
On that side, yeah. How about the other sides?
This side, it won't, it might be a foot or two, it won't be that much.
How about on the diagonal up the top there?
Up here, I believe it's, I can't even read it, but.
Yeah. Can we get rid of that bar?
I think it's only about, you can't see anyways. I can, I can look over here if you want, on my plans. I believe it's about a foot in that corner.
Okay, and then the other side, the right-hand side, what's?
This is all, this is just, I'm sorry, I didn't talk about that. This, this is a chain link fence.
Yeah.
Around like this.
Right.
Comes down to here and here. This is the proposed outdoor storage. We have a double twelve-foot gate here, double twelve-foot gate here, because there's a fifty-foot access and utility easement that runs through almost half the lot. I believe it's for the access. It may be for both, maybe access to the detention pond and access to the septic system. So, we've allowed, you know, an access point here and here to get through there. It's hard to see, you know, that, you look, go through the deeds and stuff, it just says access utility. It doesn't explain when it's for, I couldn't find that. We assume it's for, because here, there really is no shelf here to get to the back of the detention pond. It just slopes off pretty good. So we assume that was the access to get in, come around and do maintenance.
And the best you can tell is no utilities in that?
There's a, the sanitary sewer, the septic system, the front of lot, there's a two-inch force main that comes along the front lot. There's a five-foot easement on the front strip. It comes along, and we believe it, it comes through about here, and then goes out back to that septic system. So as far as we know, you, you know, there's, there's no visible, we found a cleanout on the corner lot, we think it might be connected to that, but we don't know for sure. But other than that, there's really, there are no manholes running, because it's just a force.
Do you know where that comes from?
That force, that force main services the entire septic.
Okay.
So everybody has a pump into the system.
Yep. Back to my other question, but on the right-hand side of the lot there, the vertical, what's the difference in elevation once you're finished between you and the next lot?
Okay, this, right now, it's confusing. This is a huge fill pile. There's a lot, there's probably, we figure maybe fifty-five hundred yards of, we think they scraped everything up about five lots up. Put it here. I believe they were gonna use it ten years ago, and then it, it just remained.
Okay, so it's essentially flat between you and the next lot, is what you're saying?
It's not flat, but it's not like this. Because we proposed to take most of this down. We're gonna be, we're about, the finished floor on the building is about two and a half feet above the road at the entrance. We're trying to stay high enough, so he doesn't have to blast a lot of ledge.
Right, right. Why do you need that wall along the back of the property, this side of property?
This?
No, the one, the side.
This, because of the grade, because of the parking lot being here, up so high.
Where is the parking lot?
This is, can you go back one? This is, this is parking, and then this is all parking up to here. So we had to do that to be able to build that up and retain that. That's why we had to put the wall, because, again, this drops right off. It's pretty steep on the other side of it. Again, we have a, can you go like two more down to the utility drawing? So this is the utility drawing. We have, these two are water lines coming in, one's domestic, one is fire protection for the sprinkler system. We have an electric box over here, underground electric coming in here. We have gas coming in here, and then here's our septic, with gravity down to a septic tank, gravity to a pump chamber, and then this pumps out to, I think we found the stub for the, to the septic there.
And how big is that easement?
Easement in the front, or the big one?
The big one.
This one, I believe, is fifty feet. It's an access and utility easement.
And you're not putting any of the, anything in the easement, correct?
Nothing, there's a structure, no. And we have a, there's a pad here. There's a concrete pad for a dumpster. But there's no building structures, nothing else. You know, if they ever had to dig it up, they have to dig it up.
Is there a representative of a car or a truck there in the lower left of the building? About halfway, halfway up?
This?
This guy, yeah.
No, that's, that's an island. That's a grassed island. Because we had to have a break every eight spaces, so that's a grassed island.
Yep.
Get down, I think one more, I think it's the planting plan. So with the planting plan, we proposed four trees. We've got shrubs, shrubs over here, shrubs over here, and a bunch of this would be long and seated to get our landscape requirement.
We have received a, a letter from our design review board, which I hope you've received a copy of.
Yes.
You got it? Okay, good, alright.
Yeah, I know the, our, our plans didn't show the tree sizes or the, or the gallopings, so we're gonna add that.
Yep.
They wanted to know if we could either plant shrubs here, or some kind of vine, some kind of growing vine to, you know, mask that, that wall on that side as you come up the, you know, as you come up the road, Shire Drive.
Yep.
That's what you'd see. So I'm sure we could do that. They requested that we make the front section of the chain link fence, because it's what you'll see from Shire Drive, that that is some kind of vinyl fence. The rest of it, we've proposed chain link with a privacy screen.
You're gonna have to ask for a waiver to put the fence in the easement. There's nothing allowed in easements. Trees, fences, anything, no structures.
Okay.
Not to say that this won't work.
Right. That's another way of going.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on the layout before?
So you're blasting that whole foundation?
Not sure yet. We hope we're high enough. We don't know. Problem is, this fill pile is more than half the lot. We don't know what.
Where's the fill pile rate?
Could you go back to the first sheet, existing conditions? I think it's best to see it on that. All this, all this is fill pile.
Okay, so your grades at the, the version around, it's the pile.
We have grades with that gone. We've graded with that, with that gone. He's gonna have to, his, his plan is to screen it and then take it out, except for what he needs for himself. But a bunch of it's, you know, there's a lot there. But we don't know what's under that. You know, hopefully there's no ledge on top. I've never seen what's under there that's been there for a long.
So this two sixty-nine grade right in the center, that's part of the fill pile?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not sure how far that'll go down?
We just don't know. When we take that pile out, we level it up.
Word stops.
Is the ledge right there, is the ledge, two feet down?
Okay.
You know, because there is some visible ledge over here. You know, it looks like there might be, you know, we don't know if there could be a vein running through like this. We know we did see some down on the slope in the detention area. So he plans to screen that and then take that out. Read what he needs, but.
Did you say there was a pond?
This is the detention pond. It doesn't look like a pond. It's got large trees.
Okay.
I haven't seen any water. We couldn't find the outlet. We looked one day. It's, it's, it doesn't look like a normal.
It doesn't look like a pond. I was looking at it on a map, and it doesn't look like a pond.
It's pretty big. Again, I don't know if it, it actually, if you see the water, I don't know.
We go back to the subdivision planes, Rich, and see what the basin's supposed to look like. Is there a chance that maybe that detention basin wasn't completed structurally? So there's no structures around that basin?
There is, there is an outlet. It was just, it was thick in the middle. The day we were looking, we didn't see it. I'm sure it's there.
Okay.
But we just, we looked for a minute, because we were curious to see the rest. Because when we first came to this lot, when you look at this lot from the street, it looks almost like the detention ponds in the lot, and then we wouldn't have this edge, but we had survey points, so. But again, it falls right off, just outside the lot.
We have a member of our design review board with us this evening. Bob, you wanna make any additional comments?
No, our, our letter.
You gotta have a mic, sorry.
Bob McAdams, Design Review Board. We did review this on Thursday. We did submit a document package, a letter to the planning board, indicating that we believe there was some additional information needed that we didn't have in regard to the building especially, and that there was not enough information for us to make any substantive decisions other than to see recommendations. And on the landscaping, we simply said that we thought there should be some context of what is existing in other parts of the properties that have been developed, considered at this one as well. So we haven't done that research, but that was part of our recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Do you have the elevations of the building with you?
Yes, Zach, yes.
Have you seen these, Bob, the elevations of the building?
Elevations, we saw.
You have the materials, though.
Materials and colors were not noted.
Right, yeah, okay.
We have revised drawings that show the materials and the colors as well.
So the structure proposed on site is.
I'm sorry, would you just identify yourself?
My name's Zachary Sylvia. I'm the project architect from Dennis Wood Architecture.
Thank you.
No problem. The proposed building is a prefabricated metal building, so the outside will be insulated metal panels, gray. We also have at the entrance a split-phase CMU veneer that goes on this side here and wraps around the front. If you go to the next image, it shows it a little more clear.
Oh, yeah, okay, yep.
So the proposed finish would be insulated metal panels. The volume to the left is the warehouse, single story. The volume to the right is a two-story office space. We have the split-phase block on this side here, as well as the front, and then a built-out metal edge around the window.
Black.
To match the red.
Black.
The, it would be bronze, dark bronze, for the windows and for the storefront system. And this metal edge around the top would match the red CMU veneer. If you go to the next slide, I'll walk through the plans. Lower level here has shelving for the, I believe it's for the concrete forms. And the right side has an entry vestibule, a conference room, restrooms, the services of the building, as well as a kitchen for the staff. And then upstairs are six offices and bathrooms. The next slide, if you don't mind. We identified the same materials we just discussed, the vertical metal panels. The metal panels will sit up four feet on a concrete foundation. And then we'll have the split-phase veneer on both the side and the front entry. Then we have two volumes, a single-slope warehouse, and a single-slope two-story office space.
Which way does the back, the larger rectangle, which way does it drain?
Towards the back of the, of the site.
Towards the back of the site, okay.
Yes.
Well, what did you guys use for screening for outside storage? What do you use for screening for outside storage typically?
Typically?
I know you mentioned the chain link fence with maybe slats or?
We typically have asked for solid material systems to provide screening, and that's where the area to be screened has public view. As we looked at this, the parking lot side and, and potentially the side facing Dedham Street possibly could be viewable, but the rear is not viewable from anything but the catch basin compound.
So you're recommending the solid screening on the sides, it could be viewable?
We had recommended, we had, we had heard that they were recommending solid screening on the side that faced the parking lot, but it didn't, it didn't go down along the side of the building, to our knowledge. It wasn't listed there, anything more than a screen fence, as we saw it.
You guys made any decisions on that?
We did propose, you know, the privacy screening all the way around.
Solid screening?
Yes.
Are there any other questions about the building itself?
Nope. Okay, Aaron?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's nothing back there, you know, except the brand-new police station.
What about it?
So there's nothing back there, except the brand-new police station.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, well.
Yeah, the back is the.
That's a share and F, that's not in Shire.
Well, that, yeah.
Back's the septic system. One side is the detention pond. The right side is Lot twenty-one, and where, he's actually a client, too. His building will be further forward. He'll be in the front, so his, his building won't be near that, near that outside storage at all.
Nice place to hunt.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on the, from the board?
No, I guess the chief wrote a number of responses, but that's part of the file, that's all accepted.
No, they have to respond back to the chief.
I haven't responded back yet. I know his concerns was, you know, getting a fire truck up into the parking lot on the right. We've run auto turn, you can get it in there. He wanted to make sure that there was a Knox box for the fire department. He wanted to make sure that the septic tank could take the loads, H twenty loading, which it is. I think that was it.
Are you gonna provide him the, you ran the auto turn, you said you're gonna provide him the plans with the auto turn?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do a letter for fire chief. I'll do a letter for design review board.
Okay. The one, the one thing about the, the privacy slats, I mean, if you go up there, and maybe it's just the way they're specked out, but the ones at Island Power and Lighting, they're really, you really can kind of see through them, so they don't really screen that well. So I don't know, as far as what, if you go on the privacy slats, you're thinking about specking out, but they're, they're not the greatest as far as screening-wise goes. Now, there's another one up on the, where Titan is on there. They have the privacy slats, but they backed it with like a fabric. So between the two of them, that, that created a solid barrier, so I don't know.
Well, we can take a look.
Yeah.
You know, if you want something that's, you know, more private. I know, you know, if we put vinyl in the front, that will.
Well, that, yeah, that will. But as far as the side goes, because I mean, you can't, like, if you drive past Island Power and Lighting, you know, you just look to the left and you can see, you can see through it, so it's not really effectively screening.
Yep.
Will you help to have a couple of evergreens there, just to break up all that fencing?
Well, again, we felt the landscape plan was relatively limited at this moment, and we didn't have enough information to go forward.
Okay. We can wait for the second submittal then.
Yep.
Dave looked at it, right?
Very good, thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Looks like a good project, and we encourage you to continue.
Thanks. So for the next meeting, we'll have the, so we'll have the peer, peer review report from Beta, which will forward to the applicant, and obviously the goal there would be, hopefully have a clean letter for the next meeting.
Yep. Do we have the, the designer review board and the chief's letter in the hands of Beta as well?
The chief, yes.
I sent the chief's letter. I do not send him the DRB comments.
We'll get, we'll get him DRB comments.
Okay, alright, good, thank you. Okay, all right. Good, thank you.
Do you folks can update your proposed, your submission to the designer review board, what they were looking for, what was missing? So, that's complete, okay. Good.
So, the continuance till the...
Yep, need a motion to continue until December 18th at 7:30.
Motion to continue.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of a continuing public hearing? To December 18th at 7:30 PM, say aye. Aye. It is a vote. Thank you. See you on December 18th.
Thanks.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
You as well.
This looks pretty good, yeah. All right, so Rich, you're gonna be up next to the rest of these updates here.
So, as far as the closeout conversation, that makeup seems to be appropriate for the working committee?
Yeah, I, I think it's fine. I don't see any change. Anyone else want to add any other members to the committee or substitute anything for the makeup that he suggested?
All right, well, we'll go with that. We got the complete streets. Fox Run. The...
Must be very close to finishing that, so this.
Fox Run paved?
Yeah, Fox Run's paved. The driveway aprons were put in. It was kind of a little bit, little bit close on the timing, because that was around Halloween.
That's good. Yeah, the, yeah, the roads were nice. I mean, some of the aprons, the large step, and I think they had a drop-down. There was none at the end of my driveway, but they didn't have to do it again. But everyone's, yeah, the road's fine. There's, there's no bumps or anything like that. I, I think the people still have questions about whether or not they can have speed bumps. That's, that's a concern that comes and goes, I know. Some people have contacted you about that, but...
Right. The, the stamp, the stamping around the pavement, around the, 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 the rotaries, or roundabouts, the island, sorry. The landscape islands and the, those, they're trying to get them done, but the weather hasn't cooperated, so. I don't know. At this point, we might be into the springtime, but it's still, he's still trying to get that done, but I suspect the way the weather's been going, the, the stamping, so the stamping of the asphalt around the, the landscape islands, that'll probably be a springtime.
That was done when they paved the road?
No, because they, they come back in afterwards, and then they imprint the, so they basically put a, a grid pattern, the block around the asphalt, and they mix it with pigment, so it becomes stamped asphalt. So, they didn't get to do that, unfortunately. They did landscape the, the island, but I know the outer side of it needs to be loma cedas. That's not done. So, they're gonna have to come back in the spring to do some of the, the landscape work. That's not all finished yet, but, you know, I think the main thing is, at least for now, the pavement's done, so that's a huge step forward. We do have a couple of driveway aprons that need to be redressed on Warren Street. They're, they're the two existing houses that were there before, and the, the grade going into that's kind of steep.
They're gonna lower them?
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna have to, because otherwise, you, you bottom out. Yeah, so, they've been going back and forth with John. I don't know if we're gonna get, hopefully, they haven't had too many issues with their cars, because I'm not seeing this getting done timely, unfortunately, but they do need to address it. And then, like I said, landscape items and then, but...
You'll put this on a tickle file for the spring to bring it back to the board?
Yes, yes. Yep, I will.
Any other concerns, Gary, from your end?
No, I don't think so. There's, I mean, there's minor things, silt barrier and stuff like that, but that was all on their checklist. I just don't think they, you know, just a few minor things that they'll do in the spring, not a big deal.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, where are you now?
Forty B updates.
Forty B updates, I guess, right?
It's on the schedule. It's, it's on the agenda. That's interesting.
Somebody slid it in there. I know you had asked about forty B updates, and so we, we conversed via email. I think you wanted, I think the thing would be to, to take a look at the housing production plan.
Yep.
Well, as far as forty B goes, we're still, you know, there's still Abbeville open before the zoning board of appeals. There's the two projects there. One was a rental piece and ownership. That's still before the zoning board of appeals. As of December 18th, we're, we'll be falling out of Safe Harbor, if you remember that. I think we talked about this, but, so, we were in one-year Safe Harbor for the prior forty Bs that were approved. It was a one-year timeframe with the 16 units. It runs out December 18th.
So, we'll be out of Safe Harbor then?
Yeah, as of December 18th. Depending upon what happens at the board of appeals, number of units, where we go. It, it could be, you know, two years, two-year Safe Harbor. If it's 32 units.
Is the enclave the only thing that's close to being approved, which has what?
Well, now, it doesn't even have enough. It's, yeah, so it's 40, so you're talking 10 units, so it's not even...
Does that get us, that gets us nothing. What do you need, 16 for a year? All right.
Which one's the enclave?
So, the enclave is the old boys' guy property?
Over at Winston Street.
It's like the river's aunt's little sister.
It's 40 units?
In the same area? It's in the same area?
So, it's kind of bounced, so...
It's not in the same area, but it's same developer, same concept.
So, update the board a little bit. It's bounced around a little bit. There was, it came in at 56, I think the number was. Board of appeals asked them to take a hard look at the, the density of it. They even considered taking out age-restricted and go into ownership, which was, that would have been 28 units, and it bounced around. It bounced back to age-restricted, and it's hovering around 40 units right now.
And what do we got, 10 of those or...?
10 of those are affordable, yeah. So, we're not, that wouldn't get us up to...
So, I guess the part I don't understand, I never understand the mathematics, and if you had a few minutes to explain to me, that would be great. I, I, my understanding is, large developers come in, they're gonna build 100 houses. 10 of those have to be affordable houses. Is that...
Twenty.
25%.
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent.
Of, of forty Bs.
Our zoning is 10%. Forty Bs are 25%.
So, so in the case of Pulte building 42 houses?
It's not a 40B.
No, no, it wasn't a 40B development, but isn't there a burden on them for affordable housing?
Yes, four.
Four, so that is, that's 10%.
And they went offside, so they offered five.
Okay. And in actual 40B development, they have to build 25% of the house.
Twenty-five percent, yeah.
But our only...
It's 20 to 25%.
And what's our requirement to the state to remain...
The overall is 10% of the residential dwellings that we have in town. Now, if it's a, if it's a rental project that's a 40B, you can count all the units, market rate and affordable. So, the regulations are, you know, geared towards rental, to boost the numbers, and that's...
So, even with the benefit of having one 40B development, so 25% of that, we still don't make a 10% quota. So, what are all the, it must be, there are a lot of small developers building single houses and...
So, the, so the 10%, the inclusionary provision that was in the zoning bylaws, eh, 2003? That went into effect roughly with the subdivisions? And don't forget, so what happens is that when you do the 10-year, then those houses end up in the denominator total, so it brings your number up a little bit.
Every 10 years, the denominator changes.
250 units roughly?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think, I'm gonna say like 170, I think. 170, 180.
So, we'd have to build in the neighborhood of 800 units through a 40B to get the, the 180 units that are required.
We're about 180 units short. 180 affordable units short. And just remember, every time you build units, you, you're adding to your number, so...
And the census will change that in, is it a year, Rich, 2020?
Twenty, twenty.
And that will increase with the new census, so...
And the number stays fixed for 10 years?
The denominator stays fixed.
The denominator stays fixed, yeah.
But if nothing's built in the town in the course of a year, you still have to build affordable housing?
You don't have to.
Well, you don't have to, no. No, it's a, it's a state, state, yeah. Every town, yeah.
If nothing's built in the town and you don't build affordable housing...
The way, the way the law is written is to promote development of affordable housing.
Yeah, okay. And are, are all the towns, the same problems occurring in all the towns?
There are 351 cities and towns in the state. Something like 50 have achieved the 10% level, and they're all inside 128. And a few others are very close or have reached it recently, but...
I mean, here, neighboring, well, so, I mean, Rentham is approximately 12%. I know Plainville, they had fairly large rental projects. They have up to, they're above 10%.
I think Medfield hit 10%.
I think they might be.
You normally get there through rentals.
The best way to do it is through rentals.
Speaking of which, where's our development at, the train tracks?
So, that's been withdrawn. That one's right now.
Went back though, right? We expected to come back.
I suspect that one will be coming back, yeah.
Last time we looked at it, it had 72 rental units.
72 rental units, yeah. But, obviously, there's been ongoing discussions about...
76, excuse me, 76.
You know, the Southwood property, that being developed with rental to be a, so the challenge, I mean, the hard part is, you know, you, generally speaking, you know, the rural, semi-rural towns, you know, you need a larger rental project. At the same time, though, it's, it's, you know, how do you, how do you take a large rental project and make it work in a small town? That's, that's the real challenge, so...
You put it at Southwood.
You know, we don't, we, we have, we have a location, fortunately, but...
So, what's, what's going on with Southwood? I mean, that, we haven't met with that committee in a long time.
Well, so, it is related to this discussion, I suppose, right? So, there are, there are two offers that have been submitted to the Archdiocese, which the Archdiocese is reviewing them right now.
Craft-backed out, correct?
Correct, yes. There are two other bidders that are, put a request in for the Southwood.
Didn't the Archdiocese make a request that the town put together some sort of a plan as to what type of development would be, you know, acceptable? Am I misremembering that?
No, I think you remember correctly. Yeah, there's a kind of a development theme for the property. And so, they're, what, right now, what they're looking at is, you know, there's a rental component, there's age-restricted, some townhouse, assisted living, and a commercial component.
Do you, do you know the identity of the two bidders? I'm sorry, Gary, do you know?
Kind of like what the original plan was that fell through?
Sort of.
Sort of, but not as dense.
We met with one of the groups, one of the bidders, I think, from South Borough.
Yep.
And they were just in the preliminary stages of doing due diligence, and it just reinforces you the hurdles that are needed to develop Southwood, not the least being a water source.
Yeah, capital.
To water, it's...
If it remains, I mean, I think, I think there's some general agreement that that would be a good place to develop. So, what are we doing as a town to encourage development of that site?
Well, I think we've shown a willingness to work. There's, it's kind of a tough question, I suppose, but...
When Walter was on the economic development credit list from Paul McAdemas, they expanded the zoning. So, the zoning that is allowed by right there is probably as far-reaching as any zoning we have. The height limits, the density allowed, the different types of, of development are just extensive.
Yeah, commercial opportunities that, we talk about housing, it, it primarily for the last three or four years, but it has plenty of allowed zoning for commercial opportunities as well, should there something ever pop up.
I mean, you asked a larger question. I think there, there could be some zoning tweaks to it, so to speak. I mean, I think there's some things that can kind of, well, one of the things right now in the zoning, you have to tie into town water. Now, with the, you know, the water issues that are, the town is grappling with, it, it may be something where they could find their own source of water, not tie into town water. So, that would be a zoning change.
In fact, if they, if they, if they did that and they had excess water, they could even sell it to the town.
So, that, that's one thing we could do, but I think, well, we have, so Capital Properties, Capital Properties Group, I think, if I recall correctly. Yeah, they came in, we met with them, and said, "Look, if you become a successful bidder, then you gotta go through your permitting process. That's when we can do something." But...
What I failed to understand for the last four years is why the town can't do anything more substantial to promote the development of that site.
What we talked about, we looked into it, and their board did, and they let us know, or the other boards. Right now, there are so many encumbrances in that property. Someone investing that much money, right now, the zoning pretty much is unlimited for what you want to do. And right now, we're pretty much at the, the point that someone that's gonna take on that operation and put in millions and millions of dollars before they even start the roads, is probably gonna come up with a concept plan that they want to work through for them, that works for them. And that's why the Archdiocese has been sending people that are serious to us to go over what their thoughts are to develop the property to make sure the town's alive. There's really not much more you can do as far as zoning inclusion over there to make it anywhere, unless you did something like triple the, the density, but that's almost a waste, because there's no soil testing we've done. So, the odds are, George, you know, the capital group that came in, they looked at us and they had George's plan, and they sort of chuckled and said, "Who says you can put this many units on this site?" I said, "Well, actually, they did, but they only had the advantage of eight soil tests." At least I know the folks who are in the right ballpark. They just laughed. Because you're, you're talking about massive testing over there just to see what you can do, and what absorbs stormwater and wastewater. So, the task at hand before you even decide what your project's gonna be is extensive.
That's why doesn't the town take on soil testing?
Bring it up. Put, put a warrant on it, let them spend the money. And again, you soil test based on what your project, you think it's gonna be, so you don't just go willy-nilly soil test. And it's very expensive to do also, which is why George Valone never did it.
So, so part of it is, obviously, the cleanup's a huge cost, capital cost, because the, you know, the development portfolio, it's, it's residential, so... And where the, the landfill is on the site is prime...
That's the big unknown, because they, they have no idea when they start, like this folk said, when they start digging, where they're gonna find more waste. They have no idea.
I don't know if the zoning is that, it's important, don't get me wrong, and we can work with that, but the actual site itself, some of those things, the, you know, the water, the wastewater, contamination, those are kind of heavier, lift their constraints on it right now.
Yeah, they are. The water's huge, too.
The water is. So, I mean, at least I, I can't speak for the past, but when we did read, they came in, we talked about, you know, there are state programs. We could bring mass development in to, to talk about how we can, you know, so, we can't help. It's just, basically, we're waiting now to see if one of these bidders comes out, and then we can meet with them and then go forward on it.
Do you know the other bidder?
I don't know who the other bidder is, no. So, we answered, sure answered.
Do you know, do you know when the Archdiocese has a deadline to...
It's this month.
This month.
Yeah.
They had a deadline a year ago, too, Walter, remember?
Yeah, I understand, yeah, right, well...
Well, because the thing is, there was, so, I, so mass development has, had a bunch of funding that was available to do site assessment and all, and for, you know, for brownfield sites. And I talked to them already, they're applying for it, but the problem is that, well, it's, it's an Archdiocese site, and the town would have to apply, and so there's, again, like, I mean, the details of the program, but once, if one of these willing bidders came on site, we, there are other programs that we could reach out to, tap into, to help with the assessment of it.
It's like the tail wagging the dog, right? You gotta convince somebody that it's worth it in order to find out whether it's worth it or not. So, that's, that's not gonna happen, right? So, I mean, we've been waiting since, I've been involved for three, going on four years now. and we keep talking about the same thing. Nothing, nothing substantial has changed since we started talking about this site, other than we're waiting for a developer to come in, it's all our problems, which isn't how developers work. So, I, if we're serious about Southwood, then I think the town's gotta do something about it and change our approach to it. I'm, I'm not pointing fingers or anything, I'm just, I'm just, I don't know what the answer is. I, I haven't taken it upon myself to figure it out in the four years I've been involved with it either, so.
Well, I think, so, for the, the short term, we'll see what happens with one of these bids, and if nothing comes of it, then I think we need to turn the next page to what you talked about. Because I think it, again, it does play a part in, in, in the housing piece relative to this, to forty B, because there are, I mean, there is, there's a forty B that's been in the waiting over on one forty-four Secoast Street, which originally came in as a ownership and rental, and they've requested a project change for ninety-six single-family homes, no rental. That hasn't even gone before the board yet.
What's the status on the, uh, the Lawrence Street Bridge? Is that still on hold because of the water level?
It's on hold as far as, yeah, the water. So, we're, we're looking into actually getting, do some de-watering to be able to, to lower the water, to be able to pour the forms for the bridge above it.
Like messing with the dam?
No, no, no. Basically, you, you pump the water out in the sump and you put it into a, a hole to, to de-water it.
Really? Who's looking at that?
The contractors, with Green.
So, you have to build around it to be able to pump it out?
No, 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 they, what they do is they, they take a sump pump and they'll pump the water out into a, they dig a hole and then the water get, gets pumped into the hole until there, to be able to then.
How big of a hole do you deep to pump the water, do you have them a five acre pond?
Not for the pond.
No, but, yeah, that's what I thought.
Just behind the bridge above, so, the water's come up, so they need to pour it. They gotta put the gravel in, then pour the form for the, the, the bridge abutment, so it's just de-watering to be able to, to pour the concrete.
The water's gonna keep coming forward from Rentham, right, as you de-water it?
Yeah, the, but the elevation of what's the bridge abutments are, they're high enough that a little, just a little bit of de-water will allow them to pour the form. Not lower the dam, that's not.
We can't.
No, right, so, but there was discussion about that, that's not happening, so, just want to be clear about that. Because, for the record. And then, maybe mother nature helps us here a little bit, but it's been not too helpful, yeah.
Give it back for a second, one forty-four Secoast, what did you say is the latest on that one?
So, they asked, the applicant applied to mass housing for notice of project change to make it all ownership, so there's no rental. So, it went from, I think it was a hundred and four, maybe? Hundred and four combination between ownership and rental to ninety-six ownership units.
Okay.
When we fall out of safe harbor, we lose any influence on forty B projects, is that what happens?
Yeah, well, yeah, you do, 'cause then the board, you know, there's no more.
Safe harbor doesn't give you influence per se, it just gives you the ability to deny.
Yeah.
You can deny.
You just delay, delay it until your safe harbor's over.
Oh.
So, it's a, it has fair value.
Delay, that's all, I mean, you, you, it doesn't mean you can't.
And once they're, once they're in the queue, being delayed, even if we've reached ten percent.
They're still in the queue, they still occur, yeah.
Yeah, so just, so one forty-four Secoast Street was already in the queue, so that's still, when the, so the, so we have three projects.
It's at the state level that they get in the queue, they go to the state and they.
Yeah, you know, the tough part is, Gary, if we are five units short and there's a project in the queue that's a two-hundred unit project, where fifty are gonna be affordable, even though we're only five units short, the whole two-hundred unit project, if it's in the queue, comes forward. And so, the best way, obviously, to get to ten percent.
Yeah, so one forty-four is, again, it's in there, it's waiting to be heard.
So, is there, are there things that'll happen on December eighteenth because you lose safe harbor?
Not.
There's nobody else.
Your next planning board meeting, but.
No one else is in the queue, right?
Your next planning board meeting. But, no, I mean, it just means that if somebody was gonna file, they could file and they're, they just become part of the queue. It's not a matter of the Board of Appeals, open hearing, decide to, uh, to hear it, to stay it, or deny, you know, so that's really the, you know, again, it's fairly significant to the town.
This hazardous waste stuff, you know, you talk about, uh, Southwood and getting someone, a developer, into build it. We have a developer looking to Bill Abbeville. And that developer's been held up for quite a while, and there's still no way with our insistence on where to test and how extensive, there's no solution on who's paying for the testing. So, the problem may come, as far as the town goes, the town's obligation, if, if they do testing and they find some of the contaminants are, are beyond state requirements, say, and our developer walks away, you're in the middle of a residential neighborhood there and you've already got proven contaminations assorted by whatever names they are, and what does the town do then? Does the town just let it sit there? Because as it sat there for twenty years, no one knew there was, perhaps except the neighbors, the thought, but nothing concrete that, that there was contamination there. But once we find out there is contamination there and there's all these abutters, and if this developer walks away, what does the town do?
Who owns the property though? Isn't it Buckley Man that still owns the property?
It owns Buckley Man that are all either in nursing homes or, or ill, so, yeah, they probably just leave that for tax title. So, that'll be a, so again, you've got the same contamination problem with somebody that's already done all the testing and done all the filing and still it's being held up.
So, if the town had to do the work, doesn't the town put a lien on the property for the, at a minimum, for the work that they're doing? And at some point, can't the town acquire that piece of property, so that?
I think, I think how it might work is if, if it goes to tax title, the town probably wouldn't want it because you would incur the obligation, but then you still have the issue that, you know there's contamination with neighbors there, what do you do? So, that may be coming up down the road too, based on when, when this testing gets started and what they find.
Yeah.
So, I think that's pretty much, it's almost like, from what I understand, they, the developer doing it, I think as of now, the apartments that were going there are not gonna be there anymore. I think the fifty or so apartment units, if I correct Rich, have been scrapped from the project and right now, they're really deciding on how many units to put in and who's gonna pay for the testing.
Is there something directly across the street from that, the pond that was on the schedule for tonight?
Cranberry Heights. Cranberry.
No, no, I meant on the other side of the street off of, uh, it's in the, it's, it's on the other side. I'm, I'm forgetting my road names, unfortunately, but Tom DiPasoio had it on.
Park Street.
On Park Street, thank you.
I think that's only a lot or two, fifty-two Park Street.
Was that just lots of a development? Because it had a waterway, I thought, that went into Bush Pond.
No, that's across the street.
Yeah, and that didn't filter in?
They went to conservation and they just getting it all delineated, but it doesn't look like there's room for a lot of units there.
So, it's just by coincidence that it's DiPasoio doing that as well as the other front office?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else?
No, I, I think, uh.
Well, I just have one item, we touched on it earlier, but as, as you all know, we, we have a pending suit by Hoopatrosi from Wall Street Development. And I'll try to meet with the attorney, town attorney next, what?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, yeah. Find out what our obligations are. One thing I did this afternoon while I was sitting at my computer is I went back and took a look at all of the minutes of meeting. I just extracted, um, whatever we had said about Fern Ridge in, in the years two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and just put them all on one piece of paper, it makes it easier to, to read, uh, gives you the timeline, if you wanna pass it on. So, it just consolidates the minutes on a one document. I know I needed it to refresh my memory of what the sequence of events was, you know? So. Do we have any other business this evening?
I have a few things.
Okay.
Just for the, the schedule for twenty nineteen was.
Schedule, yeah, the schedule for twenty nineteen, um, we had talked about this last meeting that we wanted to try and set up a, a, uh.
Second.
Second Tuesday of every month as the regularly scheduled planning board meeting. And I think you have received enough information back from the board, have you not, Betsy?
I did, yeah.
Okay, so.
It was pretty much on board with the, um, second Tuesday of the month.
Right, and so the second Tuesday of the month for twenty nineteen is, is laid out there by Betsy on that list, which I just typed into my calendar, which apparently went up to a three calendars. How that happened, I don't know, but it did.
All right.
Okay, Aaron, what do you got?
Our monthly reading.
Yeah.
There's a notice here from the Planning Board of Franklin for a significant, uh, fifty-three single, fifty-three single-family residential building lots. Which is not small. It is the one, Prospect Farms. We have a notice from the Attorney General about Medfield changing their, their zoning bylaw amendments. They're adding an overlay district in the center of town to allow multifamily housing. And a second zone, um, also in the center of town to, a much smaller zone to encourage, for changing the commercial zoning, basically to, um, encourage commercial development in the center of town. This might be becoming a personal thing of mine, but I noticed in our sales, Boyd's, Boyd's Crossing units sold for under two hundred thousand. Guessing that must be one of the affordable units. Another notice from the Attorney General for Medfield, though, I think, no, it's, it's different. It actually has to do with, uh, cha, they're changing some of the wording in their zoning related to special permits, which I know was something we talked about last week. So, I don't want to read through it, it's basically concludes a special permit is warranted by the applicant and evidence produced in public hearing if it makes the following specific findings of fact. So, I thought I would give this to Rich.
Yeah.
So, he could review it, and, uh, says I know he's working on that for us. And then we have a notice here from McCormick and Maitland, Attorneys at Law, relating to the work at Lake Street, where apparently they think the work is proceeding at a pace that exceeds their review of things that were promised to them. Don't know if the town's doing anything about that, but.
We're going faster than we said we.
Apparently, they're doing work, they think that they're, they, they were given the right to review drainage structures.
Oh, jeez.
And apparently, it looks like drainage structures are going in and they haven't reviewed them, so.
They have to follow conservation.
That's it.
Thank you, Aaron. Any other new business?
Uh, Rich, you were working on, what is it, the B-one design guidance or something previously in, in the last meeting? I'm just wondering if there's a deadline for that and if you need feedback on that.
No, no.
No and no.
No, there's a deadline, but you're not up against a deadline, and if there is, I'll let you know.
Okay. So, you had circulated a few, are you still looking for feedback on that, or?
That additional one was pretty good.
The one from Bedford, Bedford I thought was, yeah.
Bedford?
I thought that was, actually, I, I do, I, I forward the, I wrote back to Cynthia at MACPC, thought that was probably more in line with what we would wanna.
Yeah, it, Bedford had a, a page in there that said, here are the top ten things that you ought to consider when, when we're, and then they listed nine. But aside from that glitch, that was what I was talking about, you know, there ought to be a list of top ten things that we think are appropriate for the center of town that gets MACPC off to a running start.
Did you like that one?
I only scrolled through them relatively quick, but I, I will give you feedback on it, though.
Yeah. I still have time, so.
I'll do it.
So, I'm, I'm still looking to the DRB to create our list of ten things, the top five or six things, whatever that we ought to have for the center of town, so that we can give that to MACPC. Other than that, they're gonna come back and tell us what they think, and I think we ought to tell them what we think.
Do you wanna carry that back or should I write to the board, just?
Uh, I'm happy to write to him, unless, unless you feel like you need to, I, I will, sure. Take that one for you, how's that?
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, any other issues, topics, discussion? Sounds like we are ready to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a second. Any discussion?
Let's adjourn.
All right, any, all those in favor say aye, aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.